I'm going to ask for a motion from Councillor Kinghorn that council adopt the agenda for the regular council meeting, January 22, 2024, as amended, to add an in-camera session, 11. A is what I put it in as, in-camera session to discuss a labor issue later in the meeting, and also an amendment to remove Section 8.2 regarding the MOU with Foothills County and the transfer of provincial flood funds. I do not believe we are in the position to be going down that road when we're still in the middle of land negotiations with Foothills County landholders down the Little Bow. We do not know yet where that financial outcome is going to be settling out, so I don't believe we should be going into any other MOU. We're in a weird position that the province has put us in, that we have to handle their funds and distribute them to another municipality, but they've made us do it, so I just think it's way premature when that is still ongoing down on the Little Bow. So that's my requested amendments. Councillor Kinghorn, if you accept the motion?
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. You have my motion.
Any questions? All in favor? Consent agenda. Ask for a motion from Councillor Walsh that an omnibus motion adopts the following in accordance with council's procedure bylaw, the January 8, 2024 regular council meeting minutes as presented, and our strategic priorities chart.
You have my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All in favor? Any public comments outside of the delegation from what the BSRC concerns? The BSRC concerns are going to be dealt with directly by Dr. Linda Ormsen and Kathy Avery-Dynas, so any other comments outside of that? See none? We will move... Oh, sorry, Paula.
Can I say maybe?
Is it to do with... I know you sent an email regarding the BSRC, so if it's about the BSRC, Paula, I'm going to ask you just to hold tight for now until we have the delegation as the representatives from that group. Is that fair? Thank you. So, yeah, we'll go right into the delegation, and I know Linda and Kathy are right here. And just so, whenever we get into these positions where we're talking about staff and labor and everything else, if we get to a position where I feel we should... it's best to go in camera because we will not discuss individual staff members or anything like that, we're not doing that in public meetings in this town, that's a no-go, we will move in camera. Everybody can leave. It'll be council, Chris, and the two of you. Then we can discuss specifics if that's required. Okay? Go ahead. I'll get you there. We'll discuss it with council here this afternoon in camera and figure out a way forward as to what, because absolutely this doesn't just get swept under the rug and made to go away.
Thank you.
So, okay?
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Kathy. Thanks, Dr. Ormsen. Okay, moving straight into 2024 budget motions.
You have before you a request for decision to adopt the 2024 operating budget of $32.985 million and the capital and special projects budget of $24.11 million, as required under subsection 242.1 and section 245 of the municipal government act. As you are aware, council and administration have completed numerous conversations over these past number of weeks on the 2024 budget, striking a delicate balance between service level commitments to our community, municipal taxation, and the long-term financial sustainability of the town. All these elements are supported by a budget that effectively uses funding from our government partners in the form of grants that generates non-government and non-taxation revenues wherever practicable, that invest funds generated through cost containment strategies to support town's strategic priorities, and that ultimately leads to responsible tax increases and effective use of reserves. The adoption of the 2024 operating capital and special projects budgets will allow the town of High River to continue operating and capital activities as a going concern while providing the financial means for the town to continue offering programs and services to the community. Upon adopting the 2024 operating capital and special projects budget and pursuant to subsection 242.3 of the municipal government act, the interim budget that council adopted on December 11, 2023 ceases to have any effect. As noted within the request for decision, administration recommends the adoption of the 2024 operating capital and special projects budget as presented. That concludes my comments.
Thanks, David. Any questions from council? Obviously, this has been discussed for the last couple of months, and this meeting was just to approve what we discussed at the last committee of the whole meeting, so... Now, the motion that I'm going to read, we adjusted it a little bit because discussing with Chris this morning, didn't feel like it was completely clear for the public exactly what this means to them. So we wanted to make darn sure that when we do this motion, that everybody understands what it absolutely is. So question from Councillor Kinghorn.
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. Going back to that last meeting that you brought up, we had talked about a 3.2% tax increase to the residents, and now I see we're at 2.35, so congratulations for bringing it down. Is that the right term? Did we cut a little bit out of the budget to get to that 2.35, or are we taking it from somewhere else, reserves, whatever?
So the 2.35 is revenue increase. The 3.2% is the actual tax increase because we need to take a portion of the tax increase and remit to the province for special education funding.
So the actual tax increase to the residents is 3.3. Our portion is 2.5, and we get to keep the rest of it as the education requisition, all those...
The requisitions component of the taxation, yes.
So that's where we've discussed in how we word these, and, you know, just saying a 3.3% tax increase really doesn't mean a whole bunch to most people, but this is a... You break it down to what the actual dollar value is on an assessed home of 440... Average residential assessed home in High River is $445,000, which equates to approximately $81 per year, or $6.75 a month increase, average. Any other questions?
I'll ask for a motion from Councillor Smith that council approve the 2024 operating budget of $32.985 million with a 3.3% tax increase that will cost the average residential assessed home of $445,000 approximately $81 per year, or $6.75 per month, and that council adopt the 2024 capital and special projects budget in the amount of $24.11 million, including new projects of $7.422 million, increases to existing projects of $9.3 million, and carry-forward projects of $7.388 million, consistent with the enclosed 2024 capital and special projects budget schedule, and that council approve the use of $645,000 from the tax stabilization fund to reduce the municipal tax increase.
I will give you that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Motion is carried. Thanks, David. Operating expenditures, housekeeping thing, now that we've passed the budget. Do you want to speak to it at all?
Yes, sir. Yeah. You have before you a request for decision to pass bylaw 4623, 2024. The 2024 operating expenditure line of credit bylaw is required under sections 251 and 256 of the municipal government act. The passing of this bylaw is an annual requirement under the act. The passing of this bylaw authorizes the town to borrow from the Royal Bank of Canada sums of money from time to time to meet the current operating expenditures of the town until taxes are collected, provided that the total principal sum owed to RBC at any one time shall not exceed the sum of $7 million. Upon passing this bylaw, bylaw 4611, 2023, the 2023 operating line of credit is repealed. As noted, within our request for decision, administration recommends the passing of bylaw 4623, 2024, the 2024 operating expenditure line of credit bylaw as presented, and that concludes my comments.
Thanks, David. Questions from council? Something we have to do every year, so... I'll ask for a motion from Councillor Jones that council give first reading to bylaw 4623, 2024, operating expenditures line of credit, and that council give second reading to the previously mentioned bylaw, and that all council give unanimous consent to proceed with third and final reading of previously mentioned bylaw.
I'll give you that motion, Mayor Snodgrass.
Thank you. All in favor? Carried. I'll ask for a motion from Councillor Nidchuk that council give third and final reading to bylaw 4623, 2024, operating expenditures line of credit, and that council repeal bylaw 4611, 2023, the 2023 operating line of credit bylaw.
I'll give you that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All in favor? Carried. David. Last one, David, and then you can go do something constructive.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sure you're busy. You've got some money to spend now, so get you out of here.
You have before you a request for decision to pass bylaw 4624, 2024, the 2024 supplementary assessment bylaw, as required under Part 9, Division 4 of the municipal government act. The passing of this bylaw before May 1st of each year is an annual requirement under the act. The passing of this bylaw authorizes the town to prepare supplementary assessments for the purpose of imposing a tax under Part 10 of the act in the same year, a tax that will provide the financial means for the town to continue offering programs and services to the community. Upon passing this bylaw, bylaw 4610, 2023, the 2023 supplementary assessment bylaw is repealed. As noted within the request for decision, administration recommends the passing of bylaw 4624, 2024, the 2024 supplementary assessment bylaw as presented, and that concludes my comments.
Thanks, David. Any questions from council? Ask for a motion from Councillor Kinghorn that council give first reading to bylaw 4624, 2024, the supplementary assessment, and that council give second reading, previously mentioned bylaw, and that all council give unanimous consent to proceed with third and final reading of the previously mentioned bylaw.
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. You have my motion.
All in favor? Carried. Ask for a motion from Councillor Walsh that council give third and final reading to bylaw 4624, 2024 supplementary assessment, and that council repeal bylaw 4610, 2023, the 2023 supplementary assessment bylaw.
I'll give you that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Have a good afternoon. Easy money. Election sign bylaw. Jody?
Yes, thank you. So administration is recommending that council repeal the former election sign bylaw, as well as the amended election sign bylaw, and replace both with this new election sign bylaw. The primary changes are to the requirement to perform a utility locate prior to installing any signs in the designated areas. You will see that within the bylaw, there are 10 designated areas, and formally it was directed that anyone putting any of those spikes to secure their signs performed locates in advance. This is now moved in the new bylaw to be a town responsibility, which would be performed within the 30 days before the election signs are able to be placed on the public lands. This will make it easier for all of the candidates and campaign managers. Another change is that the 10 locations where the election signs are permitted on public lands will be marked accordingly by the town to clearly identify the areas. So depending on if it's grass or something that can be spray painted, then those areas will be marked out. If it's dirt or something of that nature, we're looking at flags or something to indicate the border of that area. This way, signs that are within the area are permitted. Bylaw had been noticing with previous elections that the signs were sort of creeping, but there was no real defined area, so we'll be doing that as well. And then lastly, there are some small amendments or clarifications to allow bylaw services to enforce the bylaw as needed. There was just some wording in there that we cleaned up to make it a little bit clearer as to what bylaw can enforce. With that, if council has any questions, I will be happy to answer.
Thanks, Jody. It's always confusing for everybody every year, so the more we can clean this up and learn from where we have been to where we're going is fantastic. So any other questions? Ask for a motion from Councillor Smith that council give first reading to bylaw 4617, 2024, being the election sign bylaw, and that council give second reading to the previously mentioned bylaw, and that all council present give unanimous consent to proceed with third and final reading of the previously mentioned bylaw.
I'll give you that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All in favor? Carried. Ask for a motion from Councillor Jones that council give third and final reading to bylaw 4617, 2024, being the election sign bylaw, and that council repeal bylaw 4561, 2019, and bylaw 4602, 2021.
I'll give you that motion, Mayor Snodgrass.
Thank you. All in favor? Carried. Now, did you say creeping or creepy?
Creepy. Not creepy.
All right. No, to be clear. Charles Clark, CCMC Property Management Services. Jody?
All right, thank you. So as you know, the town acquired full ownership and operational control of the Charles Clark Medical Center, or I typically refer to it as the CCMC, as of December 29, 2023, which was the last business day of 2023. As the acquisition of the facility is beyond the current resources to support the property management at the level the current tenants are accustomed to, administration recognized the need to provide these services through another means. So council gave direction and administration posted a request for proposal, or an RFP, last month to evaluate the options for providing property management services for this newly acquired municipal property. And administration received five responses. Of the five, two were late, so they were discounted. One proposed a different model to consult on the services required, so wasn't quite what we were looking for, and one did not acknowledge the addenda, which was a requirement to ensure the full understanding of the RFP. There were actually... Sorry, I can't remember if it was four or five that were posted as addendums to the original RFP, and there was not that acknowledgement in there. So this left one viable option that administration explored and did an interview with the company, and they appear to be able to provide the services quite well. Although they are located out of Calgary, they do provide their property management services already to a couple of other High River organizations. So administration is recommending that council award a three-year contract for the CCMC Property Management Services to Edon Property, Inc., which is operating as Edon Management, and the annual costs are just over $113,000 per year, excluding GST, and then any potential additional annual operating requirements, such as if a mechanical failure, such as a boiler, were to go down, they would have to call in the appropriate expertise for those areas. Does council have any questions on this one?
Thanks, Jody. Councillor Nidchuk?
Thanks, Jody. Appreciate that four out of the five were not really usable. I understand you said that you kind of had some experience-based information as they provide service in town. I'm assuming that provided a lot of context for us, because if we didn't get to review some other companies that responded to the RFP, for whatever reasons that they had there, seemingly we had one response that was valid that we could look at. I'm not at all questioning the ability of administration whatsoever, but I guess just what made us comfortable in that we had one respondent that was valid, and the parameters that you guys looked at, at awarding the contract.
Absolutely. It's a fair question. So of the two that were late, one, this was an expansion to their current business. They... According to the RFP, what we understood was that they are more so in property design, not so much property management, so they were looking to expand the service provision that they are able to provide. So even though that one was late, we did kind of still look at their proposal. The other one that was late, this was also an expansion to their services. They did have a bit better understanding was demonstrated within the RFP, but it still was not to the extent of Edon that is in this business. They have provided their services to Alberta Health Services and other government-type organizations. organizations, so that's why we felt quite comfortable going forward with them.
Thanks much. That last bit gives me a bunch of validation. Thank you.
No further questions? Ask for a motion from Council Nychuk to council award a three-year contract for the CCMC Property Management Services to Edon Property, Inc., Edon Management, approximate to the value of approximately a hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents per year excluding GST and potential additional annual operating, operational requirements, and that council authorize the mayor and CAO to execute the property management services contract with Edon Property, Inc.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll give you that motion as presented.
Okay, all in favor? Carrie. Thanks, Jody. Okay, eight point two has been removed, so eight point three now regarding the biodigester. We submitted an appeal after we heard about the approval of the biodigester because, and we submitted the appeal based on our dissatisfaction with the way that Tidewater and Rimrock have designed the liquid digestive ponds. We would like to see that product be fully enclosed and at the very least have some type of covering over it to keep the wind off of it if there was ever a, an odor that came off of those ponds that it would not drift into High River. As well, we are still, and more and more so, we're seeing the lack of proper, what we think is proper, regulation surrounding these biodigesters. They're, you know, yes, they've been around, but it's been pretty loose as to how they've been regulated. So that's what we put the appeal in to the government on the approval. We did receive a letter, what's the date of this thing? January nineteenth from the Environmental Appeals Board that they have declined our appeal on the basis that we did not submit an SOC, a statement of concern, when the project was first announced. The problem with that is, is that the only ones that knew about this project are, that Tidewater had to notify, were only within a two-kilometer radius of the project. So we didn't even know about it until we heard about it, and then at that point in time, the SOC deadline had long passed. So that's what, we're not ending there like a good fight, and this might be a, might be a good one, but we are pushing back because there are, we, before we did the appeal, we asked our, our legal as to whether we can even appeal because we didn't submit an SOC, and yes, there is legislation in law that says, yes, you can appeal if you are, even though you didn't file an SOC, if you are directly affected by a project, then you can still appeal it. So that's the basis that we made the appeal, and we will be fighting back against the Environmental Appeals Board for declining our appeal. So that's where we're at. Michael, anything to add? That's where we're at. So game on. Good. Okay, that's on that one. Council reports, anything? Board and committee reports from anybody? Chris, you wanted to make a comment going back to the budget?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. Just want to provide clarity for all of council and the members of the public. The three point three percent tax increase does not include provincial requisitions. We have not seen those requisitions yet. That will be in addition to the three point three percent tax increase, if there was any confusion on that. So the municipal portion of our tax increase is a full three point three percent, which translates into two point three five percent revenue, gross revenue increase to the municipality for operations. I hope that clarifies that. The requisition piece that our manager, Financial Services, said was not, is not included in that.
Okay, so when, when will we know what that looks like?
The provincial requisitions usually don't come out until after the budget, the provincial budget, which is released in the end of March, and we see those in early April.
Good.
I think we'll adjourn this meeting and move in camera to discuss with Sonya and Nancy. So the only ones that will be present for this session and then will be coming out of in camera and adjourning the meeting, so I will yeah ask for a motion to pause the regular council meeting and move in camera at 3:52. Motion from Councillor Smith, please.
You have that motion, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. All in favor? Carrie.
I'll ask for a motion from Councilon Nychuk that we move out of the in camera session, reconvene the regular meeting of council.
Give that motion to you, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor? Okay. One motion coming out of the in camera session. I'll ask for a motion from Council Walsh that council directed administration to launch a full third party workplace review into all operations of our aquatics facility at the Bob Snoggrass Recreation Complex.
I'll give you that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All in favor? Council correspondents for information, correspondents from the Lowman Library, correspondents regarding Too Dumb for Democracy, didn't read it, correspondents regarding single use product bylaws, and correspondents from AHS. Any questions, comments on that? All good. Meeting adjourned 4:36.